I think we're ready. Let's go ahead and call this meeting or call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Palmdale City Council. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Protem Loa.
Here.
Councilmembers Olson.
Here.
Bettencourt.
Here.
Alarcon.
Here.
Commissioners Ferguson. And Bets.
Here.
We have a quorum.
May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Ferguson?
Oh, make the motion. Oh, second.
We have a motion in second. Everyone say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Thank you for that. Item number three, pledge of allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence. Mayor Protem, can you lead us in that?
Yes, thank you. Your right is hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, please. And Mayor, we had Alicia Shamschuk from the AV Press, who passed away recently. Thank you, Mayor.
And we will be, uh, we will be adjoining, adjourning the meeting tonight in memory of Stephen Wood. And we'll have a couple of brief things to say about him as we close. So next, we're going to move on to our cue critter video. Madam Clerk, can we go ahead and cue that video, please? We'll take it up after. Okay, we'll discuss that after the meeting. Forgot a way to get it. Okay, thank you very much. City Clerk, can we please acknowledge the observances for the month of September?
The city of Palmdale would like to acknowledge the following observances: Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, National Preparedness Month, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, Hispanic Heritage, Heritage Month, September the fifteenth through October the fifteenth, and National Recovery Month.
Alright, thank you very much. And for the cue critters as well, I want to thank our partnership with Animal Control. If you saw any of the animals you like in there, go ahead and adopt them, and we'll have that video made online as well, on our YouTube channel. Okay, so, we have a presentation. We're very fortunate to have a presentation this evening by the Matthew Perry Foundation on Grassroots Recovery on the Grant to Fentanyl Campaign.
Oh, you need to do that. Thank you, though. Uh, first of all, happy birthday to the city of Palmdale, in case nobody's had a chance to wish you happy birthday. Uh, I am here on behalf of the Matthew Perry Foundation, which is a foundation that was established uh, in the name of the late actor Matthew Perry, uh, to fulfill his legacy of helping as many people as he possibly could. Um, this foundation started a little over eight months ago now at this point, and we really want our first campaign to be going to communities across California, asking, you know, community leaders, including elected representatives, what are some organizations on the ground that are doing the work to meet this epidemic head-on? Because this is now the number one leading cause of death for people under forty-five. Over a hundred thousand people died last year, just like they died in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one. So this problem is, you know, it's risen to a level of public salience that is really important. Um, but that being said, the work that you all doing here in the city of Palmdale through the community foundation is really exceptional work that we really wanted to highlight through this grassroots recovery grant. Um, what's really special about these grants is that even though we are in the middle, we just started National Recovery Month, uh, and next month, I know you all are doing Red Ribbon Week, uh, which is the leading national, uh, drug prevention program. Uh, this year's theme is life is a movie, live life drug free, and I know you all have the Youth Multimedia Prize that you do during Red Ribbon Week. So we thought this year's program was especially timely and especially important. Um, and the, I do want to note, these grants are unrestricted for the foundation, so we want them to use it however they want to. Um, but I know that there is a whole lot going on in the recovery space over the next couple of months, and I'm sure there's no, uh, end of the things that you can think of to put this money to. So a special thanks to Councilmember Olson through your work with Assemblymember Correa's office, um, who really put this program on the map for me and for the foundation, and we really wouldn't be here without your leadership, so special thanks to you and, uh, to the entire city council, uh, and really to the community foundation. We just want to present this, uh, ten thousand dollar check for the work that you all are doing to fight the opioid epidemic here in Palmdale and the Antelope Valley overall. So thank you all so, so much. Can't wait to see what you do with this.
Councilmember Olson, would you like to say a few words since you had a, such a, you played such an important part in this?
Sure. Don't we have anything for them?
We do, but I'd figure maybe you want to say something. We do, we do.
No, just, uh, thank you for the opportunity when, um, Bob Hertzberg told me about, he's on the board of the Matthew Perry Foundation, when he told me about this opportunity, um, the Fight Fentanyl campaign was top of the mind. We're getting a lot of eyes on that. The work we're doing is amazing. Other cities are asking us for our leadership in this role. And so having you come in and partner with us, uh, that ten thousand dollars is going to be put to great use. I promise you that.
I'm sure. Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, who do I hand this off to?
I'm coming down. We have a little, we have a little presentation, so.
Okay, great.
So, thank you so much. Like Councilmember Olson said, it will get put to good use, and thank you for including us in this worthwhile cause. This little token appreciation, appreciation on behalf of the city of Palmdale, the city council, and the entire city staff, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Is everything coming up Palmdale, Eric?
Everything's coming up on.
Alright. So.
Everything's coming up on.
Alright. So. City Manager, do you have any items tonight to pull from the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please play the public comment code of conduct and read the public participation statement into the record, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation. Now is the time for public comments on Section Six, Housing Authority Consent Calendar, the entirety of it, Section Seven, City Council Consent Calendar, and Section Nine, Appointments. Now is the time for public comments. We have Eugene Hernandez for seven point five, nine point one, and nine point two.
My first comment is regarding the ABTTA, the Animal Valley Transit Authority, and I've been bringing up this issue for years now, is that why, with all the billions of dollars that they get, why can't they provide bus benches or protection for consumers who are using the, the bus lines? If you ever drive down the street and you see people standing in a hundred and four degree heat with no bus bench, nothing to protect them from the elements, the, the ABTA should, is responsible for providing at least a bus bench for all these consumers. You know, it's an outrage that they give themselves multimillion dollar salaries, but they don't do anything. The second one is, uh, regarding the appointments, again, like I pointed out last meeting, you're appointing people to these different mobile home things and all that without naming who the hell are you appointing? And also, the people who are being appointed to these commissions should have at least the decency to come up, introduce themselves, and say what they're gonna do on the mobile home issue, et cetera, you know? It's, it's only fair for us, the taxpayers, to find out who, who you're giving these plum positions to. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I currently have no more speaker cards on these sections.
Okay. So, Commissioners, we're on the Housing Authority Consent Calendar. Do we have any items to pull? Or we can make a motion in second and prove the balance at once?
May I please pull six one, please?
Okay, pulling six one.
I'll move to approve six point two.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in second for six two. Let's go ahead and vote.
Can I vote in? Motion passes.
Thank you. Alright, let's go ahead and get a staff report and dig into six point one.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Commissioner. Heather Nichols, Supervising Coordinator within the Housing Division. The item before you is the request to approve the Housing Authority and her report in accordance with Health and Safety Codes three, four, three, two, eight, and three, four, three, two, eight point one, and authorize the Executive Director or her designee to submit the report to the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development. The report includes a list of housing authority agreements and amendments for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Staff is available for questions.
Okay.
Thank you for that overview. I just have, um, two questions. Uh, the first pertains to, so, part of the report in, includes a narrative about the three mobile home parks uh, that we manage. Um, so I just wanted to get, uh, an update on a discussion we had at a prior meeting specific to those mobile home parks. When we were considering the rate increase for those mobile home parks, there was some lively discussion from a lot of the residents, uh, about improvements that were necessary. Uh, and then we got, um, some feedback from staff that they were going to prepare sort of a line item, like an itemization of all of the necessary repairs and improvements and a projected budget and incorporate that into our this year's fiscal, uh, budget, but, but maybe potentially over the course of several years, depending on how much capital was required to, to complete those improvements. So I just wanted to get a status report on where we are with itemizing all that needs to be done, what, if any, improvements have been made thus far, and, you know, moving forward, what we plan to do.
We're in the process of putting together a memo that's going to outline everything that, um, we, that was suggested, all the capital improvements, the budget, and we're working with Newport Pacific to get those, to get those over to you guys.
Okay, good. Timeline projected, maybe?
Um, not sure.
And then my last question is, is, uh, in relation to the last sentence of the report. Um, it recommends legislation, um, but it's not very clear exactly. It says, in addition, the housing authority recommends legislation to address the impacts of accessory dwelling units by right SB ten sixty-nine on sewer infrastructure traffic and parking in residential zones as an unfunded mandate. What, uh, do you have any, any additional information on what legislation you're suggesting that we move forward?
I'm sorry, I do not. I can find that information out for you.
Okay. I mean, City Manager, do you have any idea?
So, as, as, as accessory dwelling units, uh, are part of the governor's design to try and increase housing, we need to understand before they are just by right added to locations that we assess their impact on the surrounding infrastructure. So we would support legislation that instead of allowing it by right, that it's done through surveys and analysis and things of that nature.
Okay, so I was, when I did a little bit of research, SB ten sixty-nine was, um, adopted and, and signed by the governor into law in twenty sixteen. I just, is there any specific legislation that, I mean, it's been, it's been several years since this was in, I just don't know what, why we are including this if we don't have any specific legislation that we're advancing.
Uh, the point to the, the staff's recommendation. This covers housing, it covers planning, economic development. Um, the state i- in its effort to create housing across the board has allowed accessory dwelling units. Along with accessory dwelling units, the, a city cannot require additional parking. So the uses often end up creating problems on the street. There's no on-site parking. These neighborhoods were designed, when we do planning, as you probably know, there's engineering, there's a lot of land use analysis that goes into it. Say you've got a piece of land with a planned hundred houses on it. Sewer size, water pipe size, all of the infrastructure was designed to fit a hundred houses. Now the governor has said, no, you can build up to four per property. So now it could go to four hundred units on where were those hundred? All of a sudden, you got sewer problems, you got water problems, but Sacramento has been very firm in saying our interest in creating housing is more important than your local impacts. So there has been thought, not just in Palmdale, but statewide, to ask the governor, to ask HCD, OPR, all of the offices to say, you know what, housing's important, but not destroying the quality of life in existing communities is equally important. The League of California Cities is looking at this. I'm pretty sure SCAG's looking at it. So there's a lot of activity with potential legislation, with local and regional and subregional responses. They're recognizing this, that while we help with ADUs, at the same time, we are perhaps destroying neighborhoods. So, as all of the state offices stick to their guns of no regulation, the local agencies are looking to do legislation. I, I don't think you've advanced to a point really regionally to come up with proposal, but this has proven you've not forgotten.
Right, so I understand all of that and the concerns that have been raised since ADUs in twenty sixteen, when SB ten sixty-nine was, um, signed into law. My question was, is there any specific legislation that we're talking about here? That's really it. No?
No, not at this time. We would join efforts with CalCities and any additional legislation through Correa's office or other assembly members and state senators as it is warranted.
So, so, I, I've mentioned that the house behind me used to be a single-family dwelling, a two-story that is now converted to a four-family dwelling. Uh, it used to have a three-car garage, now it has no garage. There is no parking, except on the street. And the one thing that I'm curious about is the red, the rec, the restrictions on animals, because it used to be you could have a certain amount of animals per residence. Now there's four residences. How many animals can they have in that house? Um, it's going to be interesting to see what actually happens inside that household, because now there's four families, and if each family can have two or three dogs, i- it's going to be very interesting to see what goes on. Um, I don't think that's something they consider. Same with, uh, an accessory dwelling unit. Is, is the restriction on how many animals you can have restricted to the main residence or to the accessory dwelling unit? Do they each get to have a batch of animals? Um, it, it's very interesting what's happening in, in neighborhoods across Palmdale. Um, be aware. And boy, parking, when you've got four families, maybe three teenagers that drive, it really impacts a neighborhood. So with this new legislation, you might want to think about what's going to happen to, you know, the animal control issues too, because that was not something I thought about until it happened. So, just thought I would bring that up. Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, with that, I'll need to approve the item.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilmember Olson? Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, that takes us to the consent calendar. Item number seven. Anybody would like to pull any items? Got my papers mixed up. Alright, let's go ahead and adjourn the housing meeting. Housing Authority meeting. All that for one, I'm just making sure I'm not missing anything. Sorry about. Thank you for your patience. We appreciate you.
So, I, did I hear anybody pull anything? I didn't.
Did you get the item?
Yeah, so we adjourned it. I'm just going to give her a second to walk off. And then... Okay, so now we're gonna, now we're gonna be on item number seven, consent calendar. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Vote, seven, three, seven, four, seven, five.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
So we're paying, we're gonna pull seven, three, seven, four, and seven, five.
Okay, I'll move to approve the balance of your consent calendar.
Perfect. So we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, item seven, three, staff report.
Mayor, can I request that we do seven, four first? We've got a bunch of folks here, and it'll take like probably two minutes.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Are you also seven, four?
Yes.
He is? You seen him long ago, the cop? Okay, so let's jump into seven, four then.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, item seven, four is approve agreement with Monarch Landscape Holdings, LLC, uh, DBA, uh, TerraCare Associates for maintenance services at parks, facility grounds, and transit sites in Anamont not to exceed fourteen million, eight hundred, two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars for the remaining nine months for the fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, and, uh, subsequent four fiscal years for a total contract, uh, term of fifty-seven months.
Alright.
Thank you for that report. I just pulled this item to highlight a couple things that I think are important for the public to, to know about this contract. I mean, uh, over the course of the past two years, as I've served on this council, almost every time that we have, um, a project that is contracted out, I always ask, how many bidders were there? Yeah, are we contracting locally if possible? And in this instance, we are. Uh, and so I think it's really important that we acknowledge that this contract, uh, will be awarded to, uh, Antelope Valley, uh, service provider, and by virtue of this contract, we are going to be essentially funding twenty-four uh, local full-time positions, uh, within that organization to support our parks and our green space. So I think that I just wanted to highlight that because it's a really important component of, of our ability to procure and award contracts. Uh, so congratulations to the team for bringing in, uh, local AV contractors and, and keeping, uh, our work and our money uh, here in the Antelope Valley. Uh, I also just want to thank all of the, 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 the Public Works leadership, uh, and the entire team. I know this was a, a, a long time coming, and this contract is, um, is significant. Uh, its magnitude is, 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 is notable. Um, but the scope and the standards that, uh, that the team has set forth are really, really high standards. So when we hear public comment about, what are the, what are the standards going to be, and we've got to make sure that we don't have subpar uh, maintenance work at our parks and in our green spaces, what I read in this contracts, in this contract ensures that, uh, the service that is going to be provided, uh, by this contractor are going to be at the highest of standards, and our team is going to hold them accountable. So I just want to congratulate the Public Works team, uh, and, and you guys for your leadership. Uh, so that's it. I just want to say, thanks. Good job.
If I may, uh, I'd like to introduce Steve Montenegro and Evan Armstrong. They were very instrumental in, uh, preparing, uh, the bid.
There you go.
And the quality of work is from them.
Thank you. It helps, it helps us when, uh, there's staff support for, uh, for these types of contracts. So it makes it easier for us to, to let the work, so to speak. Um, I'm a numbers guy, so I'm gonna ask, how many trees are in our landscape maintenance districts? It's like.
I'm gonna defer that.
It's like nine, well, I'll say it's like around nineteen thousand.
Approximately eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand. That's a lot of trees, and if anyone, if anyone's ever had to hire somebody to trim trees, you know what a big ordeal it is.
Right.
So it's, it's definitely no easy feat. It's hard work, and we're appreciative of the people who do that hard work.
Thank you. There are, there's no additional, I'm happy to move the item.
Okay.
I have a comment. Uh, one of the things that, uh, that I noted here is, is, uh, calling out for the contractor to, uh, keep their eyes on things such as, uh, locational graffiti, observed vandalism, property losses, schedule delays with justification, uh, and so on, and then cooperate with the city, uh, staff to immediately address those things. And I, I think that's the kind of cooperation that, that, uh, we look forward with, within our staff here, employees of the city, and outside contractors such as this one. And, uh, that, that's a blight. I hear about graffiti all the time, from all over the city. All of the districts have complaints about graffiti, and, uh, i- it's something that diminishes, uh, the quality of life, and the, the residents are very concerned about that. Uh, and then vandalism is an issue that, that's addressed as well. So I, I thought that was a great part of the contract, that we're looking for that and continuing with that good relationship.
Yeah, thank you. More eyes, the better it is.
More eyes, the better. And the community has a responsibility to call those in as well.
Absolutely, and we always take the calls and respond to, to them, uh, as, uh, soon as we get, uh, to them.
Great. Okay, so they had a call for the question, right?
No, just, real quick, just congratulations on everything. That's what teamwork looks like. When I saw this item, the first thought or instinct is, why aren't we taking this in-house? The answer is, we don't have the manpower. But so, our maintenance team, the Public Works team, admin, everybody got together and they said, okay, we don't have the manpower to do this, but we're gonna set the standards we want to see. And they went through it, they put this together, and everybody's gonna win. And when you're ready to take it in-house, we'll support you there, too.
Evan's ready for that.
Great. Alright, I think we're ready to go. We've got a motion and a second, so let's go ahead and vote. It's on your computer screens.
Motion passes unanimously.
Someone hit rewind here. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I guess you can stay where you're at?
Yes.
We're gonna go backwards to seven, three, and dig into that.
Yes, um, seven point three is, uh, to approve, uh, the first amendment to the agreement with Patriot Environmental Services, Inc., for as needed biohazard cleanup and removal services, increasing the agreement by three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a total not to exceed amount of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the remainder of the contract term through June twenty twenty-seven. And this is essentially a contract to, um, clean up the unhoused camps. Uh, anything that we come across that requires a PPE for handling hazardous material uh, and, and disposing of them properly.
That, that's really an excellent price to go all the way through June of two thousand twenty-seven. That, that's really an excellent price to go all the way through June of two thousand twenty-seven. That's, that's really a good price.
Uh, it, uh, it's been a hundred and twenty thousand per year and that's another three years, uh, on top of this.
Yeah, so I, this is, this is a much-needed contract. Obviously, we don't want to endanger our workforce or anybody, um, who is out there trying to beautify and clean up uh, our community, particularly when there's illegal dumping of hazardous materials or in an encampment situation. My question is, um, less about the substance of the contract because I know we need it and I, I'm fully supportive of moving forward with it. Uh, but there is a provision in the staff report that says the city established a new encampment cleanup process. Is that inc, new encampment cleanup process, the process that was adopted, uh, to council or the council meeting before the state of the city? Is that the same one?
Let me ask, uh, the guys if they can help with that. Do we know about that, uh, the process? Uh, I have to get back to you on that. I, I do not have that information.
So I can, I can comment here. We had traditionally done it as a combination of code enforcement and public works. And based on the things that we're seeing in the field now, we're no longer subjecting some of our staff, or our staff to some, how do I put that lightly? To the things that we're finding in the camps. So, uh, we have come up with a new process and it removes our staff from those camps that have the most biohazard associated with them. And we will bring in a contract vendor, this contract vendor in Lou.
So that's the process change historically we do ourselves. Vomit, rug paraphernalia, dog excrement, anything that they have in the camp that could be considered biohazard. And it, it protects our employees, but also protects the public because after the encampment may be cleaned up, any of the residual left on the grass or the area, you don't want yourself or your kids to all of a sudden sit down and have a picnic and you don't know what you're sitting on. So having somebody go in there and clean up the, the biohazard properly and professionally is really, really important for, for public, the, the public health.
And obviously, uh, the personnel are trained in that type of situation.
Yeah, it's, it's very, very important.
It, uh, relieves, uh, the city from, uh, extra training, extra resources and all that.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is less about the need and the importance of the services. Yes, absolutely. I've been out in encampments and I've actually had to throw, throw out my high heels because I, I stepped in a contaminated area and those that were responding to the encampment said, that's not healthy. Don't put those shoes back in your car. I get it. I know we need it and it's, it's a must-have for the city. But my question is, is, we adopted a, a, a policy on encampment cleanup August twenty-first uh, as an urgency item. And, um, as I understood it, that item was supposed to come back and have sort of a publicly vetted conversation and we were going to, um, fine-tune that policy, uh, at this meeting ideally. Um, but then this is saying that there is a new encampment cleanup process for this. And then during that August twenty-first meeting, we also, um, a city manager confirmed that code enforcement, when we did the, the shopping cart ordinances, that we had code provisions for the storage of, of the materials that are seized and whatnot. I just want to know how many policies we've got. Are they overlapping? Are they consistent? Or, I mean, how are we managing this as a whole?
It's, it's not so much a policy as it is an operational process. The change that we're referring to here is a change between code enforcement and public works and how they clean up the camps. It was whose department, how do we do it? It's just an operational change is all it was. It's,
It's merely going from the city handling it to these trained professionals because of the,
In some instances, yes. And also it was in some instances being cleaned up by code and other instances being cleaned up by maintenance. So now we just solidified all of that, put it into one shop.
Okay.
And that's how we're moving forward. It's not a policy per se.
Right. I think it's important we have trained professionals.
And it's not as a result of,
Having a sensitive nature of some of these contaminated areas. But I understand, yeah, I, I,
I just, it's, it's, this seems like we're adopting a variety of policies and processes, but they're not all being discussed, yeah, as a whole, as an umbrella. And I don't, I don't, I'm just concerned that, that we adopted on August twenty-first, uh, a, a policy that had, that we needed to sort of impromptu,
I, I understand where you're coming from.
Scribble things in and out and, and then now we've got this and we've already created these codes. I don't know.
It's still coming. Yeah, but the city manager's explanation, that, that helps me clear it up more now, what it is we're doing.
Yeah, the, the way they would interchange, or is this thing on? Okay, the way they would interchange, when the Caltrans one thousand one dash R protocol is used, this company would be the city's hands carrying out that aspect of the, the remediation, the, the removal of the waste. They're part of the overall team. They're not the whole team. In circumstances that aren't part of that Caltrans removal, they do it on their own as the manager does discuss. So they fit together. They're, they're not, uh, a bunch of disconnected procedures. Uh, because these guys have the hazmat suits and breathers and whatever else one needs. When that service is needed, whether it's under homeless removal under the Caltrans policy or whether it's a separate city action, these guys would be the ones stuck doing it.
Okay, I just want to make sure what it is we're doing is that we're doing it properly and we're also leading with compassion as well. So that way, that way the city's protected, our staff is protected, and the residents are protected.
Yes, all of those things. And I just want to be clear that we are in compliance with our municipal code and all of the policies that are in there related to homelessness and unhoused and management of that. This is just a mechanism for enforcing what's already in the municipal code. There's not multiple policies and procedures going on.
For the contractor.
For any of us. We're all following the municipal code according to what is written and how we are to manage unhoused and, uh, homeless in our community. Now, fast forward to just last council meeting where you adopted the new grants passed in the, I'm sorry, the, the, um, Caltrans, thank you, the Caltrans, uh, approach to clearing encampments. That's still being worked through and we're working through the process of what that's gonna look like, but it too will be reflected in the municipal code and adopted the same way with the same procedures, the same holding of property, the same leading with compassion, all of those things that are already outlined.
All right. Councilmember Olson, did you have any comment? I saw your hand on the button there for a minute.
No, I'm good.
Okay, I, I, I trust what's, I trust what staff's doing. I, I feel like this is, I feel like this is something good for the city. And it's good that we're protecting staff as well from some of these elements. Is there any other questions or comments or? We have a motion and a second?
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
So that takes us to seven five. I am going to hand the meeting off to our, my, our mayor pro temp, Richard Lowe. I'm gonna accuse myself as out of abundance of caution, the city attorney said, uh, for having done business, uh, with the Transit Authority. So, Mayor Pro Temp, it's only a second.
All right, thank you. All right, so we say a staff report on this side?
Uh, yes, uh, the staff report is approve a budget amendment of six hundred one thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars for Antelope Valley Transit Authority operating cost for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And, uh, this was, uh, done, uh, uh, by the Transit Board, approved for, uh, trying to equalize or, uh, between the, um, stakeholders, City of Lancaster, City of Palmdale, and the County of Los Angeles. There, uh, it brings pretty much, uh, uh, Palmdale and Lancaster at the same pay, uh, payment level. Uh, the county is still kind of behind, uh, that. Uh, but, uh, the, but it has also increased their share sum. So, uh, but we, obviously, because this action happened after our budget, we need an amend, amendment to the budget to make sure that we have the sufficient fund.
Ms. Alarcon?
Yeah, no, thank you for that report. I actually wasn't gonna pull this item until I heard from one of our public commenters. But since we're talking about, um, the substance of, of what's before us today, as you noted, this is to create an equal share amongst the parties of the JPA. So Palmdale, Lancaster, and the AVTA, they're sort of, and the county are, are shifting the amount that they're contributing. So by virtue of this action, the city's share is, is gonna go down by six hundred thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's gonna increase by that much.
Increase?
Yeah, it, it brings the,
Yeah.
Amounts that are contributed by the cities.
If it was to decrease, uh, we wouldn't adjust the budget.
Yeah.
So the camp, but the camp, so I'm just maybe I'm misinterpreting the red and the black. So the, so the county is, is, is the county decreasing their share by nine hundred thousand?
They are simply not contributing their share.
There's no rhyme or reason to the color code. Maybe that's why. So this doesn't make,
We're all going up this amount.
The old rate for the county was six fifty-three. The new rate is nine seventy-three. So the county share is also going up, but, um,
The new rate is, hold on. It says difference is nine seventy-three. The new rate is nine seventy-three. Maybe the, the,
If you look at this column, that, that's,
Maybe you could clarify, Martin, please. Thanks. Mr. Tompkins.
Hang on a second. Okay. I'm gonna run the meeting, so. Standby. Yes, Mr. Tompkins, go ahead.
All right, good. Good evening. The county's old rate was six hundred and fifty-three thousand. It's going up to one point two, one point six two seven million, so their rate is increasing by nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars.
Increasing. Got it? Okay.
And then, uh, the old rate for City of Palmdale was one point one eight four. It's now going up to set one point seven eight six five five zero, which is an increase of six hundred and one thousand dollars. City of Lancaster, the old ra, rate was one three zero seven one five one. It's now going to one seven eight six five five zero, increasing by four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Got it. So I guess I was confused because they're all going up except for the county's is in black and ours is in red. I just, so, but they're all going up, right? Is that what you're saying?
Everybody's going up and was still working on the county to get a, a few bucks more, but yes, everybody's going up.
Got it.
And just for clarification, AVTA has not received an increase since twenty sixteen, so it's, it's been a while.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So that was not really wide, but thank you for that, that clarity. Um, but because the public commenter mentioned, um, the, the bus shelters and the bus benches, if you had, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd like to, uh, just clarify a couple of things. The city amenities or the, the bus stop amenities are owned by the cities. AVTA just merely maintains the amenities. We have an MOU with the City of Lancaster, City of Palmdale, and LA County to maintain the amenity. That's washing them almost daily, emptying out the trash. The amenities are owned by the cities. Now, the public will write us comments saying we need a new bus shelter. We work with the cities. Specifically, we worked with Jay Nelson and we've installed a few, uh, bus stops in the City of Palmdale and in Lancaster. Uh, but I just want to clarify one thing. We just can't install amenities anywhere. There has to be accessibility. Uh, a lot of streets are not accessible. Sidewalks are not wide enough. So we just can't plug a, um, a shelter there. So we look at, with the cities or with our jurisdictional partners, we look at what is feasible and where can we put a bus shelter? And we gotta look at what's near site, far site. We gotta look at, uh, intersections because they can create accidents. So there's a lot that goes into installing bus shelters, not just, for clarification, we don't receive billions of dollars in funding, so I'm so frightened.
Absolutely. I mean, there's gotta be a lot of thought that goes into the placement of the bus bench versus the bus shelter. Sometimes neither are there. During the budget processes last fiscal year, I, um, requested, um, uh, at least an inventory as, uh, in the City of Palmdale of all of the locations where we've got bus stops and which of those bus stops have bus benches and bus shelters and which ones don't have either. Um, so that I could get a sense of where, um, where the, the need is. It pains my heart when I see, particularly in extreme weather, when I see elderly people or disabled folks like standing with grocery bags or, you know, attached to their, their, their stuff and they're standing in the dirt, uh, in the rain or in the wind. Uh, it's heartbreaking. So I, I, I was hoping to be able to pull together that information so that we could at least see where, if there exists a need, um, in, uh, high ridership areas where we could prioritize placement of those bus benches and bus shelters.
We could definitely get you a map with our, with our, um, our system-wide stops, if you will. Or specifically at the City of Palmdale where this, because we do have an inventory of all the bus stops and wood stops do not have amenities.
Perfect. Thank you. Look forward to receiving it.
We are subject to, uh, the weather and I just wanted to make a comment. Mr. Olson and I both sit on the, uh, AVTA board. Um, there is consensus among all of the board members that, uh, each of the three, um, participants of the JPA should, uh, contribute equally. And you're working on bringing the Los An, Los Angeles County around to, uh, equalizing their amount with the rest of the two of our cities. In the past, there have been, um, deficits, the funding on part of, of Los Angeles County in terms of the contribution. And, uh, one of the effects was that, uh, the chairman, uh, was going to slow down services to portions of Los Angeles County, uh, because they weren't, they were not paying their fair share. They did come around to that and they, uh, contributed and the services, uh, were not interrupted. So the, uh, AVTA is, uh, serving a great, uh, need for the Antelope Valley. And, uh, we're all part of the Antelope Valley and we look at this as a regional issue that we all, uh, must, uh, shoulder together. And, uh, I think this accomplishes that. So, and thank you for your leadership in that, Mr. Tompkins, as well as all your staff.
Thank you.
When you get us the map, could you also, um, get us the ridership for Lancaster and the ridership for Palmdale?
Sure.
Like annual or monthly? I don't know how you guys do it, so.
Yeah, I, I, I can definitely do it.
That would be very helpful.
Just off the cuff, I know that Palmdale's about thirty-five percent ridership of our total ridership.
Right.
Uh, keeping in mind, pre-pandemic, we're at about sixty-eight percent from where we were prior to twenty twenty, where we were at two point five million passengers per year. Now we're at one point seven.
Okay, yeah.
So, but I can definitely get this.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you so much.
But month by month, we've been seeing increases.
Absolutely.
And so it's, we're recovering.
Yes, it's slowly coming back. Our community is coming back strongly. Our local transit, it's, it's slowly coming back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So unless there's anything else, it's our motion. Okay?
Second?
Will by, uh, Ms. Alarcon and second by Ms. Bettencourt. Call for the question.
Start voting.
And we can bring the mayor back.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Did he go into the van or did he go back there?
I think he went that way.
Eric?
I'll go again.
Thanks.
All right, sir.
All right, that takes us to item number eight, public hearing. All right, eight point one, staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Heather Nichols, Supervising Coordinator in the Housing Division. Staff is requesting a public hearing to receive feedback on the draft consolidated annual performance evaluation report, otherwise known as the CAPR for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. The action plan identifies programs, projects, and services to be provided during the fiscal year to meet the goals and objectives of the consolidated plan. The CAPR report includes the assessments and expenditures of CDBG, CDBGCV, and home funds. The city complied with the citizen participation plan and CDBG regulations, which require that the CAPR be available for public review and comments before submitting it to HUD. On August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, a public notice informing citizens of the locations where the report is available and inviting oral or written comments was published in the Antelope Valley Press and on the city's website. Staff is requesting that the draft twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four CAPR be approved and the city manager or her designee make necessary changes and submit the CAPR report to HUD by September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Staff is available for questions.
So at this time,
Well, I've got a couple of questions.
Do we need to open the public hearing or receive testimony?
I, I can ask questions of the staff before we do that.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so do you have any public testimony?
No public testimony on this item.
Okay. It's, there's like a list they give me here. All right, so let's close the public hearing. Council discussion. All right, we're good.
Thank you for your staff report. Um, so I have a couple of, uh, areas, um, that I'd like to explore. First is, um, you know, everybody knows housing is critical importance. We've got, you know, people, we've got a population of hundred seventy thousand. We, people are in need, trying, struggling to, to, to pay their rent, pay their mortgages, stay afloat. Um, there are line items in here and, and this is something that, that, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't you that presented it last year, but there was, uh, we had this conversation last year about unexpended funds, money that we were allocated that we just didn't spend. Um, and so that's an area of concern for me because I know that we've got people out there that can utilize those funds. And, and so my question is why, why were certain categories of these funds not fully expended? Um, so for instance, the tenant-based rental assistance program, um, was not fully maximized, was not fully realized. Is there, uh, uh, there was twenty-one families served over the course of the last fiscal year through that program? Is there, is there a reason why we didn't? Is there, is there a reason why we didn't maximize the, the use of that?
We have this twenty-one and we now opened up the waiting list to get five more. That was the max that we had, so the waiting list was open and we did a lottery. And now we're going through that to help five more families.
Okay, so.
And we're looking into the future to adding more funds to do that.
Does that count for this fiscal year or the next fiscal year?
It's gonna be this fiscal year.
Next, the upcoming one?
Yes.
So this one, and if we don't use it, do we lose it?
No, we don't, it rolls over.
The balance rolls over? Okay, and so, and we've got five new projected families?
We have, we opened up the waiting list, so Valley Oasis is working through the list to, um, get the families that qualify, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, and then, public facilities and infrastructure, there was, uh, six hundred and thirty-five thousand that was allocated, but zero was expended?
Yes, so we had an affordable housing agreement with, um, a development and they backed out of it because they found other funding. So that, that money wasn't used, so we're gonna reallocate it to projects and programs next year.
That too gets rolled over.
That too, yes, will go to projects and programs. And we, um, s- put out a NOFA in November, December, that, um, for projects and programs to use the funding.
Okay, great, and then, um, in the report, table two, uh, page nine of the actual draft report. Uh, and I'm hoping I'm misreading this, but, um, it's the, table two is racial and ethnic composition of families assisted. Um, in the category of Hispanic, there is two.
So we pull that information from our reporting system, IDIS. We ask when we, like when we do the TIBR program or we did the rental assistance, we ask for this information and then record it in our IDI system. So that's the information that we pulled from it.
I just, I, I don't know, is there an explanation? I, with the population of a hundred and seventy thousand, sixty-five percent of whom are, as reported by the census, Latino or Hispanic. That's over a hundred and ten thousand of our residents. Uh, I, it's hard for me to, to grapple with and understand how through all of the CDBG funds that we received, millions, we only helped two Latino families.
I can go back and verify that information is correct.
Uh, could you please, I, I mean, that's pretty alarming. Um, and I don't know if it's a reflection of our outreach programs, do we do it, do, do, do we reach out on, on, on the mortgage assistance program, the eviction protection programs, the tenant-based, uh, programs? Do we do outreach in Spanish?
Yes, we did provide Spanish.
I just, it's, and I, it's like mind-boggling, I was like, I'm hoping maybe there's some zeros missing or something. Uh, but it says two, and there's thousands in other categories, but two.
Is that information required for them to answer? Because I know a lot of people are hesitant to fill in that information on the applications.
Um, I believe it is required.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, during our rental assistance program, we required it in our application.
Yeah, you might wanna double-check those numbers.
So if those are in fact accurate numbers, if we really did in fact only help or, or provide housing assistance in whichever form that, that are afforded through the CDB, CDBG funding mechanisms, we've gotta do better. I mean, there's gotta be more that we can do, and so my request would then be, if that is an ac- is an accurate reflection of the Latino families that we helped in the City of Palmdale, that we get a report back on an action plan moving forward on how we specifically target, uh, and, and inform, uh, people in Latino communities who may be in need of these resources. Uh, so that num- that figure is particularly alarming when I see that we've got unex- un- unexpended funds in various categories. I'm thinking, well, we had this money, it was not fully expended. It, maybe if we had done more outreach into Latino communities, uh, uh, and maybe Spanish-speaking communities or partnered with, with local organizations that work, uh, with these, uh, these type, these targeted populations that maybe we would have maximized, uh, the u- use of those funds. So I just, uh, it's a concern.
Yeah, I'll, I'll verify the number and then, um, we will change how we target individuals if that is true.
Yeah, can we take a look at that and then also applications? Because I'm sure a lot of people apply and then they might not qualify for the program per se, so, you know, based on, um, well, based on a nu- number of factors, but yeah, we can get that too to see what the, you know, uh, people, application processes, what those numbers look like. So we get a better idea.
And, uh, you know, the majority of, uh, the Latino community is, are, most of the people that live in the City of Palmdale that are of, uh, working age are employed. And, uh, so they're, uh, may not necessarily, uh, qualify for these programs, but there is certainly a population, uh, in the Latino community that, uh, that needs this kind of assistance. And, uh, we'll join Councilwoman Alarcon in figuring out exactly what's going on with that. Because two doesn't seem to accurately depict what, what the need is.
Okay.
Yeah, let's take a closer look at that, all right.
Well, I mean, it says two Hispanic and then the, the balance, nine thousand two, I mean, the, the numbers add up. My, I mean, in the total line, so I'm just saying, it's, this is problematic. And if this is what we're submitting to the state and federal government and I just.
Yeah.
There's gotta be some assessment of how we do this work.
These numbers consist of our emergency rental assistance program and SAVES, that's where we pulled those numbers from.
I think we should.
That I've definitely verified.
Okay, I think we should take a look.
Yeah.
Although at the other multiracial, because I think, you know, with the thirty-two hundred fifty-one people in there, you know, it's America, it's a melting pot, so, but let's take a closer look at that. Okay, anybody else?
Think, um, so you'll, you'll bring a report next month, I mean, next meeting in two weeks?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, but we can go ahead and, and authorize the city manager to make necessary changes and submit the report to HUD by September twenty-eighth. If that's the case, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion for Mayor Pro Tem Loa.
Second.
We have a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, item number nine, appointments, council nomination and appointment, one board member to the mobile home park.
I'd like to nominate Evony Bernstein from District One.
Okay, we have a motion for Mayor Pro Tem Loa. Do we have a second for that appointment?
And the, the appointment is made by the mayor per our code.
Okay, then I'll make that appointment for District, for the District One applicant.
That's your district, yeah, okay, I'm, that's, I hope that person makes it.
Yeah, okay. So do I have a second?
Sure.
All right, we have a motion and a second, let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting.
Uh, just, just point of order, are, are we gonna allow the, afford the applicants the opportunity to address us? They're here.
Is the applicant here? From that last?
The nomin- the nominee that, that you, uh, move forward is not here, but the other applicants are here.
Okay, for, uh, for our next, for our next item, or for the next.
No, for the local home.
Oh, the, the applicants were invited.
Oh, okay.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
The applicants were invited to the meeting.
Okay.
There are some applicants here.
So there are several that responded that they were coming, I'm not sure which ones they are, but they did respond that they were coming.
Okay.
But I would just, I would just respectfully request that before we move forward and adopt and, and, uh, uh, and, and formally appoint that we afford those who are present the opportunity to address us and introduce themselves and explain why they would like to serve.
Okay. All right, so moving on to nine point two, council reappointment of six commissioners to the Public Art Commission nomination and appointment to one commissioner to fill the vacancy for a professional artist.
Wait, 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 well, we, I was, we're talking about nine point one.
Oh, are we still, we voted, did we vote on nine point?
Yeah, we're gonna vote, yes.
Oh, sorry.
It's still in motion.
Okay, it's still in motion.
That's why I said before we, before we formally adopt that, there are several applicants here.
We have formally adopted it. It's been formally adopted.
We have not.
We have not, we have not.
We're gonna have to vote.
On which one?
On nine point one, the vote has not yet been completed. I'm respectfully requesting of the chair that we afford the opportunity to the applicants who are here to introduce themselves and explain why they would like to serve on this.
Of course, I'm sorry, I thought you meant for six, I thought you meant for nine point two.
Nine point one and nine point two.
Would anybody, would any of the applicants like to speak on nine point one? Okay.
Hello, Diana.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you? Good, good evening, Council, my name's Diana Love, and I am the member whose term just recently expired. So just to give you a little bit of background on who I am, I've been on the board for quite a long time. The board started back in two thousand and eight, actually, as a public, we were a public alternate member. And then in twenty fourteen, uh, Terry Lee threw in a ordinance, we started meeting, uh, once a year. So we only meet once a year. And when we come to the board meeting, it's for the mobile home review, uh, applicants to submit their annual report to become in compliance. So everything gets submitted to staff. We, we as the board are only there to oversee, we can ask questions, but we generally do not interact with the members who come from the various mobile home parks. They're there to talk about their rent control and increases and improvements and complaints. Um, so, uh, some of the other things, just to give you an idea about who I am. Uh, in the past, I was one of the ambassadors for the City of Palmdale. I also volunteered with SAVES, I also volunteered for about five years with the Sheriff's Department. I am the current president of the Friends of the Library, and I also have a senior nonprofit that operates here. So I am here to serve the City of Palmdale. I would like to continue if you would have me, but, uh, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity and, um, I respect everyone's decision, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is anybody here that is, uh, applied for this board wishing to speak? Seeing none?
If not, I, there, I know there was formally a nomination, I'd like to nominate, uh, Ms. Diana Love. I was particularly, um, impressed by the responses in her application. As everybody knows, I am an, uh, an ad- advocate for transparency and it ensuring that all voices are heard. And quite frankly, that's what her response is, uh, to all of the, the substantive questions were, to make sure that all residents and management have the ability to be heard, to hear from the residents of the mobile home parks, to protect residents from excessive rent increases and assist donors, and protecting the equity, uh, uh, within the mobile home park, uh, uh, structure. So I just, I, I was quite impressed by Ms. Love, I think she's done a wonderful job, so I'd like to, if procedurally you will allow me the opportunity to, I'd like to nominate Ms. Love, uh, in re- uh, as a reappointment to, uh, this position.
Okay, does the council have any desire to nominate her? I know we had a motion and a second. Okay. So we're gonna move on, we have that motion and second?
We're just gonna vote on.
So let's go ahead and vote on the original motion and second.
And the, the nominee that you guys is, are suggesting is not here?
Uh, no.
Mr. Bernstein. Okay.
Motion passes.
All right, I want to thank all the applicants, I also want to thank Ms. Love for the many years she's served on this particular board, and I know she's gonna continue to serve the City of Palmdale in, in other capacities in the future, so thank you very much. All right, item nine point two, this is, uh, now we're at the reappointment of the six commissioners to the Public Art Commission and nomination and appointment of one commissioner to fill the vacancy for a professional artist.
My understanding is that, um, Ms. Shooter withdrew her nomination, is that correct?
Correct.
And so that will leave us, leave us with Michael de Medina and, and he's present. So I'll move to approve the, um, reappointment of the six commissioners, that term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and nominate and appoint Michael de Medina.
Is anybody here wishing to speak?
So we've got the whole, the whole commission here, and we've got Chair Sarno and all the other commissioners.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and ask, is anybody would like to speak? I know you got Lisa, you got Edward, anybody like to talk about what it is?
Yeah, you guys have done some wonderful work and we just pass.
There we go.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members, thank you for asking us to come up. We are, um, a team and we work with our city team and George to do all the things that we are having accomplished, if you will, that in the last three years. The three years have been quite a journey for all of us, but I think one of the wonderful things is, the fellow commission, why are you standing right there? Come here. Um, yeah, I know, uh, all of us work well together and we respect each other. And although we may not always agree, we sometimes agree to disagree, and I think that's the healthiest thing. Um, I really appreciate all my colleagues on the commission and we look forward to serving. If we are approved, we look forward to serving another three years. So thank you very much for all your support, and again, we thank our city team.
All right.
Anything?
So, I make my motion again to approve all six, oh, there you go.
Well, um, I just wanna say that, uh, all of us are here because George, he is the, he is the engine that is moving the art forward in our community, and without him, uh, the city would not have what we have now. You know, he's an asset for the, for the city and, um, you can see everything has been done, but basically he is the, the engine that is running this commission, so I wanna thank him for giving me the opportunity.
And we really enjoyed the event at the Playhouse.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for showing the work on this, the highlight video, we really appreciate that.
Of, of course, you know, I really appreciate your leadership, the entire leadership of our Arts Commission. Since the inception, three years ago, we've had nothing but tremendous success. And when I drive around the city, you see the art pieces, the wall murals and, and even more than that, just the, just the difference it's made in the community, just the culture that we're hoping to inspire. It, it's really starting to, uh, pick up some speed and I'm, I'm really looking forward to all the projects. I've already seen in planning, you certainly, your team certainly has a lot going on.
It's not my team, it's our team, and thank you for saying that, though, and I do have to say that leadership starts also at the very top of Franklin Parks. So Carrie, thank you, wherever she is. Thank you, Carrie, so, but again, it starts with all of you for having put, if you will, the commission together three years ago. So thank you.
Thank you.
As the newest member and planning commissioner, I would like to say that it's been a pleasure being a part of the Art Commission. I'm new, I've only been in a few months, but we've had some great ventures, we've had some great art projects. It's been, you know, um, great networking as well as great bonding, um, as a team, and I would like to see it continue. I, I love, you know, someone who's born and raised here in Antelope Valley, I love seeing the artwork here. Um, that especially beautifies the beauty we see every day, that's part of why I love living here, I love to go to the mountains, look at the sunset and go to our streams and look at our juniper trees and, um, just everything that we have here. I feel like the Art Commission is really doing a great job at capturing that. And not only that, like every place that they seem to be doing artwork, they're capturing the atmosphere of that place as well, like the Playhouse and things of that nature and new things that we have coming, so I do hope they continue with this. And that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
So I made a motion to approve all six and to appoint, uh, Michael de Medina. And I'd like to, I'd like to point out, um, you, you're making a second?
Yeah, I'm making a second.
Okay, great. Mr. De Medina, uh, has already contributed to the City of Palmdale because he, uh, created the sculpture of our very first mayor, Mr. Chimboli, Larry Chimboli, who was a great, uh, who was a great leader. Uh, in fact, Mr. Chimboli, uh, is probably most responsible for the creation of the City of Palmdale. In nineteen sixty-two, we just celebrated the birthday. And Mr. Uh, De Medina, your artwork in terms of it being expressed in, uh, the Chimboli's, uh, sculpture is fabulous, and I think you'll be a great addition if the rest of the council agrees to, uh, add you, uh, to fill the vacancy. So that's my motion and, uh, Ms. Bettencourt has seconded.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah. All right, item number ten, city managers' report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and guests, uh, lots of things upcoming, I won't go backwards too much, uh, other than to say we celebrated an excellent state of the city, so thank you to all of the staff that worked so very hard on that. Uh, it was a sold-out house and was standing room only, and, uh, as Councilmember Olson says, everything is coming up Palmdale. So thank you for everyone that participated and worked so hard on that, it was a monumental lift. Uh, this weekend, we've got the nineteenth annual Kwanis Duck Race, I do believe the mayor pulls the prize duck and we have our very own entry, so look for that while you're there. Grace Fest will be hosted at the Palmdale Amphitheater this weekend as well. The Eric Garcia Foundation Mental Health Awareness Candlelight Vigil will be on Tuesday, September tenth, here at Poncenton. We have the Antelope Valley Wellness Expo at the Mall on the fourteenth. The Palmdale is cele- the Palmdale, the Playhouse in Palmdale is celebrating its thirtieth anniversary, uh, with an event on September fourteenth. Tequila and Taco Festival on the twenty-first and twenty-second. And we also want to invite the public to a State Route fourteen North LA County Safety and Mobility Improvement Project Scoping Meeting. That's a mouthful, but basically it's all about looking at the fourteen and opportunities for improvement and safety measures, uh, as we move forward along that corridor.
Is the mic on?
Yes, it's just not turned up and I wasn't close enough. Yes, it's just not turned up and I wasn't close enough. Okay.
There we go.
So for the good of the, the group again, South, State Route 14 North LA County Safety and Mobility Improvement Project Scoping Meeting, which is a really big way of saying, join us on September 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 at Oasis Park to talk about the future safety enhancements and improvements along State Route 14 from Pear Blossom to the I-5. Get involved. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Well, item number 11, sheriff's report. Captain Barton. You're up.
Okay, man.
Have a good evening. Hello, sir.
Hello, sir. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, city council and city manager. Through the month of August, our rolling average for response times to routine calls for service is at 128 minutes versus 155 minutes last year during the same timeframe. During the same period, we've handled 35,281 calls for service versus 34,387 calls last year, an increase of 894 calls or 2.6%. We continued our partnership with the city's public safety staff with CSOs handling 305 incidents in the month of August and writing 131 reports. We appreciate this partnership, which is the model of efficiently utilizing city resources to mutually address public safety concerns. In the month of August, we experienced an uptick in response times with an average routine response rate of 142 minutes, but was still an improvement compared to last year when we had 161 minute average. We continue to deal with multiple calls that have a high resource draw and that usually takes away a lot of the resources for us. Based on preliminary data, we're averaging 314 Part I crimes per month. Part I crimes include murders, rapes, assaults, robberies, burglaries, thefts and arsons. Through the month of August, crimes against persons are currently down 7% for the year compared to last year. This includes murders, rapes and assaults, but we're continuing to experience an increase, but a little bit of a downward trend of 14% in property crimes. This is driven mostly by retail theft and auto theft. We had 309 arrests in the month of August and 18 firearms were recovered. Graffiti continues to be a prominent issue for us as well. During the month of August, the city-funded graffiti detective noted nine arrests for graffiti and conducted an additional 10 investigations. Traffic enforcement and collision prevention are also critical to our success in protecting the public. We are currently averaging 166 collisions per month, which is an increase of 26, or 23% compared to last year, but also have a 10% decrease in fatal collisions with 10 year to date compared to 11 last year. We have, we have also had an increase of 13% in traffic citations during the same period. We're at 7,954 citations for the year compared to 6,980 last year. This is largely attributable to the seven city-funded traffic enforcement deputies, of which four are motor deputies. In terms of upcoming events, we will be honoring Deputy Ryan Clinkenbumer with a 24-hour vigil on the one-year anniversary of his tragic death on September 16th. It'll start at midnight and go all the way through to the next midnight. Deputies will be standing out front and in front of the station, holding vigil for him. The city's Public Safety Department has partnered with us on a city-funded gun buyback event scheduled for September 20th at Ponson Lawn Square between 2:00 and 6:00 PM. I have a flyer here with me, the city committed $25,000 in gift cards to this endeavor. During the last event, 43 surrendered firearms were recovered. Palmdale Station will also be hosting a haunted jail themed open house on October 19th. More details in an event flyer will be out shortly and will be posted to our website. I'd like to end this presentation by inviting members of the community to participate with us in our surveys. I've brought a couple of survey flyers with me there on the back table with me. One is the actual survey flyer. Looks like this, it's in Spanish and English. It's ongoing. We, we check it annually, monthly, as well as quarterly for improvements. You can make as many submissions as you want as time goes on. We're going to adapt this to a smaller version as well and put it out to folks in certain districts, neighborhoods and at different community events. As well as this flyer here, it's called Partner with Palmdale Station. This basically asks for your name and contact information as well, as well as where you live. If you don't feel comfortable giving us information as to exactly where you live, give us a location nearby. We're going to take this information and put information in there for us to understand where you live near. So when we see crime trends happening in your area, we can send you an email giving you information on the crime trend we're seeing and how to prevent the crime, as well as doing surveys where you live, as well as putting out a quarterly newsletter in the future as to what we're doing at Palmdale Sheriff's Station. So both these flyers are in the back with me and I'm open the floor to any questions.
How's our partnership with code enforcement going? Is it helping you guys?
I think it's going great. It's a, it's a, it's nice to have civilian staff do stuff that normally we would be doing and would take us away from the more priority immersion calls. It's a good model and it's something we should add to, in my opinion.
Okay, that's exactly the feedback I think I was looking for. I think it's good to have that community partnership between the city and the law enforcement.
Yes.
Any, any of my fellow colleagues have any questions for our captain?
No, I just love the idea of the virtual deputy. Is that taken off?
We're 95% there. I have it all built out. We have the workstation put together. I just got to pilot it on a beta platform for a couple of times to make sure it's all checked and balanced before we launch it. But I would imagine we're going to launch it by the end of the month. And the link will be on our website. We'll put it out on social media as well.
This morning, I attended the sheriff's meeting and as always, you were there and gave your report. You indicated this morning that you're having more and more interaction between deputies and the, the public and that's going well and well received by the community as well. The haunted house, the city of Palmdale will be contributing $3,000 to conduct that affair. I believe that Avenue Q from Sierra Highway to 8th Street East will be shut down and the city's cooperating with that as well. So good work.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, there'll be plenty of community partners out front, almost like a event, a fair event as well for resources. So it should be a good community event. We have a deputy that was assigned to us and his family's involved in doing haunted houses for about 20 years, so it should be done pretty well.
Very good. We look forward to that.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, prepared to be scared?
Yep.
All right. All right. Anything else? All right, thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it. All right, council reports, announcements and requests for future items. Andrea, you want to go first? We'll mix it up, why not?
All right. I mean, I, there, my report has been filed, 16 events. There are a variety of things that I attended, some exciting conversations that I had with Palmdale Regional Medical Center and also with Palmdale High School. More to come as those projects unfold. But one thing that I did want to note was the first annual, first ever National Latina Day celebration that was held on August 30th. It was the Antelope Valley Women's Empowerment Conference. I was the keynote speaker. It was a beautiful event. Over, it was standing room only, occupied over 200 Latina leaders in business, in technology, in aerospace, in education, you name it, and women of all ages. It was, it was really a remarkable and empowering event. So it was the first, but it, I guarantee you, it won't be the last. So thank you to SALVA, thank you to LA Care and all of the other organizations that contributed to bringing that together. It was a beautiful coming together of Latinas in the Antelope Valley. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
All right. One of the biggest things or one of the best things, I guess, most rewarding things is the way to say it, is the six more veterans receive keys to their house at our Palmdale Veteran Enrichment Community. I think 20, 22 more houses to go? 56 total, something, 20.
We're about halfway there.
It's great. So to see fellow veterans, friends of mine that I've known for several years that, you know, coffee, what do they call it? Coffee for vets, that's it. Coffee for vets.
You go to them.
I try to go as much as I can and I, I really feel a sense of belonging to the veteran community out here, probably because I am one. Just, it's, it's amazing to see how so many veterans are in this community and how they strive to lift each other up and how we can participate in something as life-changing as homeownership. So to see six families get those keys and to know that we contribute to that, that means a lot. And I just wanted to highlight that. If you haven't seen that facility, go check it out. I had lunch with High Speed Rail Authority, they were late. But they came.
That was a joke. Yeah.
They came and they are coming. So I look forward to continue to working with them in the city to see that. Alby's Ice Cream, Palmdale Boulevard and 25th. 20, I don't, I have no facts correct today. 30th and Palmdale Boulevard. Alby's Ice Cream is owned by one of our maintenance workers, Albert. He's worked for the city for several years and his family took this opportunity to invest in the community, to start a business here. So I want to wish them all the success in the world. I hope they have so much success that he has to just handle his ice cream store. I'd hate for him to leave this city, but the fact that they invested into our community and have for so many years, I wanted to highlight. And it's really good ice cream, all natural, none of the crap. Go check it out, 30th and Palmdale Boulevard.
The good news is there's, there's a gym next door, so after you get done eating too much ice cream, you can.
There you go.
Yeah.
Other than that, I had a lot of fun at the State of the City. I think we put on a really good presentation and I'm optimistic about the future of Palmdale. Everything's coming up Palmdale, if you haven't heard.
That's Eric's quote for the month. All right, Mayor Perotan Loa.
Yes, one of the things that we do each month is you and I go on the Spanish Talk Radio on the first Wednesday of the month. So that makes for a very busy Wednesday. We have boosters and we have briefings and then we have the council meeting and, and the Spanish Talk Radio. And we talk about things that are going on in the city on that program. It's well received and I want to thank Isaniah for making that possible, as well as Sam Roman. The Homes for Family Veterans Housing Ceremony was, was fabulous, very well attended. And it's something that the city is doing to, to assist our veterans. Beautiful housing that's going on there. Supervisor Barker came up for that and it was, it was a great day. The summer concerts this summer, Ms. Perez, really I think that Ms. Smith, very, very good. The staff is fantastic setting that up and it's just wonderful to enjoy the music, but at the same time to see the community coming together. Oftentimes, all kinds of different people attending that, enjoying it together. And as far as I know, there's never been any negative incident out there. And, you know, I want to thank the community for doing that and coming out and participating at these concerts. We had the El King at the Palmdale Amphitheater and we also had the Summer Concert LA Sound Machine and the Selena, the show at Palmdale Amphitheater. And she really looked quite a lot like Selena, sounded like her too. And of course, Councilwoman Alarcon came up in her Selena outfit as well, so that was well attended. That was well attended and the, the community's enjoying it. I attended the IBW and NICA Industry BBQ down in the City of Commerce. Great turnout that day and, you know, we demonstrated our continuing cooperation between labor and the city of Palmdale and, you know, with the upcoming contract coming again for the Committee of Workforce Agreement, show solidarity with that. There was also the Chris Lane Concert at the Amphitheater. Then there was the Generations Juryed Art Exhibit Award Ceremony, followed by Parks and Recreation over at the Playhouse. That was, the amount of art that is expressed in all different kinds of formats is, is just fantastic to see that kind of expression from our community. And so it was, it was a good turnout as well and we provided some certificates to some of the winners. They were all winners in our mind, but we, we did select a few for particular attention. I attended the Celebration of Life for Alicia Shemshuck. She was a reporter with the Antelope Valley Press for many years. She was a member of this community. She had, she was originally from Chicago, but eventually came here and worked on the staff there at EV Press as a reporter. She was a delightful person. She was taken from us too early, as is oftentimes happening these days. But there was a Celebration of Life up at AVAC and it was very moving. And I'm a better person for having known Alicia and I hope we close our meeting tonight in her memory as well. Dr. Smith, Hattie Recept, David Smith, hosted a reception honoring and welcoming the Edwards Air Force Base new commanders and directors. We're going to be continuing our breakfast that we have from time to time with Platform 22 in Edwards Air Force Base. Obviously, both of those institutions and the companies that are working within it are great parts of the city of Palmdale and we want to strengthen our, our relationship with that. And so we got to do, to meet the new commanders and directors there at Dr. Smith's home. The State of the City at the Palmdale Playhouse was very positive, very well received by the people that were in attendance. And I think that across the city, the people were celebrating it as well, very positive about all of the things that are happening in the city of Palmdale. There's one correction on my, oh, we are going to have in collaboration with the Savon Drugstore, which is at corner of Tierra de la Vida and Lake Elizabeth Road or Palmdale Boulevard where the Albertsons is, they're going to be coming into SAVES to provide a vaccination program for the flu, for shingles, for other needs. That, that's going to be advertised and they, I believe they will be coming on to SAVES in October. So Sal Mendez, the Assistant City Manager, myself went and met with the pharmacist there. They've been offering that program to come to the city. There's one correction, I did not attend the family movie night, but I know you were there, Bishop.
Yep.
So that's my report.
Okay, thank you very much.
You were quite the busy bee.
I was.
And I'm really sorry to hear about Alicia Simczak. She was a good, actually a good friend of mine for many, many years. I'm really sorry to hear about her passing. And anybody who knew Alicia, Alicia, she always wrote by hand. She never typed. So you'd always see her in the audience taking notes on a pad of paper because she, she wouldn't do a recorder or, or type. She always did it by hand. So if you're listening, God bless you. And I'm sorry that I missed her Celebration of Life, I didn't know.
Yeah.
So I, I did a few things, the regular meetings and briefings and obviously the previous council meetings. And on the 23rd, on my birthday, they actually saying happy birthday to me at the Generations Juryed Art Exhibit, I was totally embarrassed, thanks to you, sir. So we did the unveiling at the Palmdale Playhouse. They had some, some new antelopes. We have the antelopes on parade. If you haven't seen the antelopes, please make sure that you go around the city and check them out. I think everybody up here on, on the bench is, did a great job at the State of the City. We each had our role, followed by a video. I think Tripeppy Smith did an excellent job on the video. It was clean, it was clear, it was just really well presented. And I think they did a video that is actually online now, right? So you can go online and watch it. Mayor did a great job. Eric was funny because he always is. Andrea was well spoken. I think everybody just, everybody brought their own personality to their, their speeches. So I just think it went really well and put Palmdale in a very good light. So I had a really good time with that. I did what's, what's called Avanon Unified, excuse me, Avanon Uni, Una, United Systems Training, which is the cameras around the city. It's in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department. They have flock cameras around the city to watch cars. And now we have a security system here at the city so that now when you go to a public event or you're on city property, you can feel safe that bad guys are being watched. And if anything happens, we'll have it recorded, we'll be able to watch what's happening on city property so that you have an extra element of safety while you're on city property. I also went to a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting on the 29th and it was hosted by Dr. Coronado. Very interesting. I was introduced to a lot of new nonprofits and they presented what services they provide to the city of Palmdale. That was very interesting. And that's it for me for this month.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you. Well, there's definitely a lot of stuff going. Well, there's definitely a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
Uh, no shortage of events and activities that we attend and especially with all the stuff coming up that our city manager mentioned earlier. I went to a lot of the same events, I'll just go down the list. Family movie nights and concerts. My hat is off to the Park and Rec staff uh, for the amazing job they did throughout the entire summer. All the shows were absolutely phenomenal. Attendance was fantastic. Everyone had a great time. And our last one, we had the LA Sound Machine and uh, Selena, unbelievable. We had probably one of the best openings to one of our shows. I have seen it a very long time, so I thought that was worth mentioning. Um, Parks and Rec, good job, you're rocking it. Um, let's see. I went to uh, community, I went to uh, ribbon cutting for Community Self-Determination Institute Charter School. The hous- how, Homes for Family Veteran Housing Key Ceremony. It's an ongoing project that council member, a couple of my colleagues talked about and it's about halfway done and it is, it's really something, it, it, it almost, it's heartbreaking to see these families get this, get the key to their dream home and especially cause they've been waiting for so, so long, but the project is, is finally gaining speed and it should be done hopefully soon. It'll be done quicker if we get more volunteers out there, so we'll let you know when those we build days come, cause they're coming, more of them are on the way. Um, we had a ribbon cutting for Big Mama's Chicken and Waffles, the Auto Mall Dine and Drive. Let's see, board meetings, we had the SAVES Backpack Distribution, August twenty-fourth. SAVES did a fantastic job in making sure they had resources from start to finish for everyone who showed up. They got a little bit of everything they needed uh, for their uh, for their kids while going back to school. Uh, Eric and I attended the Palmdale Youth Soccer League Opening Ceremony, did you mention that?
I forgot, sorry.
Do you wanna talk about that? You uh, you were kinda the star of the show.
No, it was a great day, I can't believe I forgot to mention it. Uh, but no, the Palmdale Youth Soccer League has been in our community for years and years and years and years. They're providing opportunity for kids, for extracurricular activity. Um, it's keeping the parks in my district vibrant. Um, which I forgot to also mention National Night Out, which was in Dominica, I'm sorry, a, a great event. But I presented um, the Palmdale Youth Soccer League, uh, one of them big giant checks for twenty-eight hundred dollars and then the euphoria came over me and in that moment I decided to double it, so they're getting fifty-six hundred dollars. Um, but I couldn't think of a better use of discretionary funds than keeping kids occupied, keeping them out of trouble, keeping them healthy, keeping the parks vibrant. That's the best use of uh, city money. I really enjoyed being at their opening ceremony.
Yeah, it was, it was so well attended to see the families and all the kids out there being able to play soccer. That opening day was, was really something else. We have youth and sports is, is so important and I'm, I'm glad you're supporting that. Um, State of the City, uh, great job to staff. I think it really presented well to the community. The video is now on YouTube as of yesterday. Um, if you haven't seen it, check it out, it'll show you all the good stuff that's going on in the City of Palmdale. I attended that uh, dinner with the deputy, coffee with the cop, the same CAC meeting with Laura. Uh, movie nights, uh, lots of stuff going on. Um, one thing that is, I've been working on uh, the last couple of weeks because there's been a lot of residents contacting me over our new street sweeping policy. So I've been working with the city manager and city attorney on uh, resolving that on a resolution that kinda works for everyone. Do you wanna talk about that a little bit on where we're at?
Sure, so um, we heard the community and we are pivoting into a little bit different direction. The streets will still be swept every two weeks, but we will do enforcement on one side of the street. The first Wednesday, if you will, if that's your day, or Tuesday or Monday, and then enforcement on the other side the second time. So although the streets will be swept the entire time, the enforcement, even though we're not gonna do enforcement for a few months, cause we have a learning curve. Uh, we will, we have heard the community that said they have nowhere to park, multi-generational families. Um, council was really passionate about making this work for the community. Although um, the industry standard is to do both sides of the street at the same time. We recognize that Palmdale can be unique in many different ways and that's what makes us special. So we are going to um, like I said, pivot into a little bit different direction. But we do wanna balance um, beautification with understanding of our community. So uh, we still are moving forward, but look for a campaign that will explain this a little bit better than I just did in the coming days.
Quick question on that, are the signs gonna be changed?
Yes.
Cause my entire neighborhood is posted for Friday, I mean, nobody could park anywhere in like two miles every, when I go running, I'm like, oh, same day, same, both sides.
The signs will be changed. You only have to move your car now once a month, the street sweeper's still gonna come twice a month. But you only have to move your car on your side once a month and the opposite side of the street is now open for you to do that. You don't have to go to other neighborhoods, you don't have to go to parking rides. You can, I think that this is a solution that works out for everybody. And I'm proud of us for hearing the community and adapting and listening to concerns and
Yeah, that's great, is this gonna be on an agenda so that people know? I mean, how do we come up with this policy?
We're gonna, we're gonna communicate it out through social media the same way we did the, effectively when we did it the first time, so.
When we adopted the original street sweeping policy and process, I remember there were quadrants and we adopted it as a council. We, we're not gonna bring it back to the council to talk about it?
Uh, I'm, I guess I don't understand what there is to talk about, I thought we had a solution and we're gonna do a market campaign that will-
We could get feedback from people on the issue.
They can come up as a non-agenda is, and thank us because we all heard from ya.
Okay, but, but we should articulate it in writing, put it on an agenda so people can read it, absorb it.
Yeah, that was my main-
If they wanna offer feedback, they can do that.
That was my main reason of bringing it up, to let people know that I have been working on it. If we do need to bring it back, work on messaging, you know, let's take a look at it. But the main point was to let the public know that we've listened, we've heard the residents. What works for some communities, unfortunately doesn't seem like it's gonna work for Palmdale. Every city's different, every demographic's different, we're a commuter city.
But if we're taking collective action to not enforce on certain days, that's part of the policy that should be adopted by the council is part of what
Right.
What should be transparently discussed
So-
With the public, I don't understand why there's so, such reluctance to putting things on the agenda and having public conversation about.
No, there's not, that's why I thought I'd bring it up and this is, you know, I, I thought it'd fall under requests for future agenda items, announcements, it's, it'd follow in there somewhere. I just wanted to let the note, I wanted to let the public know that, that I am personally working on it and I've seen all the messages on Nextdoor and Facebook and emails and text messages from neighbors and friends in the community and I just, I need, I needed and want people to know that we were, we hear you and we're listening and that's a really important part of public service is listening to the residents and the constituents in our city.
I wanted to point out that uh, Waste Management responded, uh, we met with them. Uh, we made our uh, concerns known to them and I wanted to thank uh, John, uh, Justin Honsinger and Josh Mann, uh, and uh, the rest of the Waste Management staff that, that met with us uh, to arrive at this solution here. And thank you, uh, Ms. Perez for working that out with them as well. Um, I think the city will, I mean, we may have a meeting and, and put on an agenda, that's fine.
If, if it's not something we have to vote on, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna finish. Um, and we'll have, you know, um, people that will see it, but what's really going to take effect is when the residents begin to see the change in the signs and that's coming up soon. So that is going to be seen by a hundred and seventy thousand people, including all the kids.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the action that, that they really wanna see. Uh, they're, they'll be happy to come and express themselves, there'll be a few people. But really the effect is when that change is happening in the streets and that's when people will notice. And they'll be, I believe that's the solution, as Mr. Olson says.
Well, I believe we're pivoting from what the original plan was. So with that is a need for communication. We have to let people know what we are doing, they're gonna see the signs change. You know, we could put it on an agenda so that they can read it there, we can put it in the Palmdale newsletter. We can send out postcards, we need to let
Let's do that.
The constituents know.
Yeah.
My point was just that Austin is, is mentioning it now in future reports. Nobody who looked at the, the agenda in advance knows that he's gonna talk about street sweeping and if they, we've had several public commenters come and, and voice concerns and suggestions on potential solutions. And if there was something on an agenda is, as an agenda is item, people would know to come and offer their comments or if not just offer comments, sit and listen and, and decide whether or not they wanna, they wanna contribute to the conversation. I just think it's, it's incumbent upon us, people are live streaming, there's a lot of other pages, people can get this information.
I was gonna say-
I don't know why there would be a position to putting it on an agenda.
If it's not something we need to vote on, we can have it on as a presentation before. Is what you're going with, I don't know if it's something we need to vote on, but a presentation, maybe when we get a, a mock-up of the sign, you get a picture, we can show the sign in the presentation and this is what it's gonna look like and all that kinda stuff, so that was it, um.
So, so Mayor Budline, we want this to be a win-win, we want clean streets and happy residents.
Right. Exactly. And we wanna show people we're listening to their concerns and, and trying to meet their needs. Cause that's, in my opinion, the most important part of government and local, uh, local service to the community. Okay, so that was it for me. That takes us to, I remember thirteen, non-agenda public comments.
Mayor, if I may, I believe uh, you and Mayor Proton wanted to mention what's potentially happening, happening in Pear Blossom in the next few weeks.
Yes.
With the offender.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna start with that?
With the um, placement of that individual here. Um, yeah, we, I guess we found out yesterday that uh, the State of California and uh, the courts um, may be placing a, a convicted sexual predator in Pear Blossom. And uh, the District Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Department uh, have requested that comments be made um, by the public uh, regarding that. In particular, any uh, individual, this, uh, this individual, I don't even wanna say his name publicly. Um, has been convicted of multiple as, uh, sexual assaults on women. Um, and uh, for the State of California, um, CDCR, the uh, state hospitals uh, that are uh, suggesting that an individual who was convicted in Santa Clara County, which is up in the San Francisco Bay area, be placed here in the Anlo Valley is a slap to our residents. But worse than that, creates a risk, in my opinion. I'm uh, I understand that this individual um, had recently, had in the past been uh, released in this fashion. Uh, there's an electronic monitoring that is placed on the ankle of an individual that is uh, being released in that fashion. And that person had actually uh, gotten himself away from that and was uh, out in the, in the community. Um, I think it's too great of a risk. Uh, what I believe that the District Attorney, is one thing that they're doing. Uh, it's requesting for comments of individuals who have been victims of sexual assault. Victims of uh, child molestation, of uh, victims of, of predators that commit sexual crimes. Uh, because those are the ones that are going to be most compelling and most persuasive uh, that perhaps the judge uh, in Department One Thirteen in uh, Hollywood uh, might listen to. So uh, that request is, is going out, I don't have the website in front of me at the moment, Ms. Perez, if you can just state it.
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have the website right in front of my face, it, it's a long URL, but uh, we've blasted that on social media today. There's several community meetings that are happening, you can look on our website and our social media pages to get all the latest information related to this.
And then if I might add, separate and apart from this particular instance, for anybody who is interested in, in knowing uh, where uh, those who have been convicted of sexual offenses, there is a California Attorney General website, Megan's Law website, it's been active for over ten years. You can go in, you can put in your address and it will identify with photos uh, where uh, convicted sex offenders reside and their, their offenses, uh, so you, you can um, inform yourselves about those uh, who are residing around you, if you wanna access that. It's at the, again, the California Attorney General's website, it's Megan's Law. You can Google it, it comes up in, as soon as you type it in.
Adding, I suppose, what's that one? Adding to the uh, the Chairman of the Department of There will be a, I don't know if Zoom or Teams or what have you, hearing on the, the person uh, being discussed for Pear Blossom on October first. What the, part of what the city's approach is, there is an aggressive outreach uh, program. Probably a couple of blasts each week up till then. Uh, but if anybody wants to, I'll say coordinate with the city, you know, they've been invited and encouraged as many people to testify. And since you'll be able to do it online on the October first date, I don't want anybody to think they have to drive somewhere. Um, so there is uh, that information we can share to also help build the weight of opposition.
At that hearing, I believe they're going to have five members from the public allowed. So obviously, that is insufficient. What's really being requested is that the public become aware of the uh, link to where uh, objection or a statement regarding why that person should not be placed in Pear Blossom. That's the important thing. Um, because that will be uh, heard by the judge that's going to be conducting the hearing on October the first. Um, and that's, that's the key thing. So we need to put that out in all of the ways that we possibly can, um, through the city. I've asked uh, that uh, Lancaster leaders as well, join us. Uh, this is a regional issue. We should, we should confront it as an issue, but it does affect our Palmdale residents because we have Highway One Thirty-eight going right through Pear Blossom. Many of our residents take that road every single day, many of them stop there uh, for gasoline or, or, or snack or whatever. Um, on the way, wherever, and this individual's gonna be in the midst of that community, so I think we need to do everything possible to convince the judge that this is not the right place. Pear Blossom is not the right place to put this guy.
The link I looked up is SVP, so I assume that's sexually violent predator. Comments, so svpcomments@da.lacounty.gov and comments are due by September seventeenth. So that's all on our website and on social media as well. SVP comments at da.lacounty.gov.
So yeah, it's unfortunate we have to even be discussing this. Again, if you remember years ago, this individual had come out here and the community banded together and opposed it and they sent this vigil, individual out here anyway. And he broke the terms of the uh, of the probation, I guess you could call it. And, and now they're bringing him back.
Of the what?
Parole, I believe it was parole.
Yeah, he broke his, his terms of the parole and now he's back and we're gonna have to fight it again and I, I, I think that's uh, that's unacceptable. So I appreciate the city's uh, the city's team and the fast response and making sure we get these statements out and get the information out to the public so they can make comments and and let the judge know how this is just not going to work for our community. We already have uh, we already have a lot of other things we need to deal with up here with our residents and this, we don't need this added on top of everything else.
We did make the announcement on Spanish radio this morning, we uh, repeated the uh, the link that you just stated, Ms. Perez. Uh, the Spanish community, the Spanish-speaking community needs to know about this. Uh, there's a high incidence of, of sexual attacks uh, on Hispanic women and children. And uh, the community simply needs to know, to do, to participate and uh, and join in opposition to this person being placed here.
And you know, we wanna make it clear, we don't wanna set the precedence where it's okay to bring these people up here. Cause it's not, it's not, especially when they're coming from different counties. That part I don't understand, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, thank you Mayor.
Alright. So, I remember thirteen, non-agenda public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Hello, sir.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Uh, on the caper report, it, it mentioned that you only assisted two Latinos. I wanna find out who are the rest of the people they assisted, was all just African-Americans? Uh, I'm, I'm interested in knowing. Um, I'm a founding member of the Anlo Valley League of United American Citizens, LULAC. And I wanted to report that on August twenty-sixth, uh, um, a, a state Attorney General from Texas, Paxton, launched an attack against LULAC, which is a organization established in nineteen twenty-nine. They had raids on uh, families in near San Antonio, including one of an eighty-seven-year-old woman, founder of LULAC. With uh, tech- with, uh, Texas, Texas Rangers raided her home at seven o'clock in the morning, forced her outside when she was just wearing, uh, a nightgown, and searched her home and took away all electronic equipment from her. And this is just a very racist attack against one of our organization's most revered, uh, agencies. And it's not the first time that Texas has attacked Chicanos. In nineteen fifteen, five thousand Chicanos were, were lynched by white, uh, ranchers and Texas Rangers. So, the point of this is that this is a national organization, you know? We have a chapter here in Anlo Valley. Um, why isn't the, the Democratic Party protesting this? Many of these people were Democrats and voting. The, the Kamala Harris campaign should be speaking about this. The Democratic Party should be speaking about this because this is an outrage. Had it occurred against NAACP, you would have heard Biden and administration talking about this, uh, infringement of people's civil rights. But because it's us Chicanos, nothing is mentioned. So I'd like to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Oscar Carrasco.
How's it going?
Good, good. How you doing?
Good.
Uh, well, good evening, counsel. Uh, I just wanted to say I'm gonna translate for her. I'm gonna talk after her. Is that okay?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Ah, buenas tardes a todos. La razón por la cual estoy aquí es porque yo perdí a mi hijo el veinti, el veintisiete de abril del dos mil veintitrés.
So the reason why I'm speaking tonight is because, uh, last year, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, I lost the life of my son.
Él solo tenía veinte años.
He was only twenty years old?
Era un estudiante que quería trabajar en Nortro. Soñaba con ser un ingeniero aeroespacial. Y la noche del veintisiete de abril, una joven de diecinueve años venía manejando a noventa y ocho millas por hora.
So, he, he dreamed of becoming an engineer and working here locally in Nortro. Uh, and, and on that night, April twenty-seventh of last year, he was struck fatally, uh, going, uh, against the lady who was going ninety-eight miles an hour towards him?
Mi hijo murió cuando llegó al hospital.
And her son died as soon as he got to the hospital?
Él no tuvo más oportunidad. Esa noche se trocaron todos sus sueños. Pero yo la razón por la cual estoy aquí es porque deseo de todo corazón que ponga un semáforo en esa área.
So, his, all his dreams died in that very instant, in a flash. And my only request here tonight is that we put a stop sign eh, on Avenue R eight and Twentieth East of Palmdale.
Si usted ven el récord de esa área, hay muchas personas que han fallecido. El diecinueve de julio del dos mil veintidós murió un joven de diecisiete años también, en esta misma área. Todos.
On, on nineteenth of July, um, of this year, there is another young, uh, young man that was also fatally struck and lost his life on that same street.
Tenía diecisiete años.
And he was also nineteen years old?
Seventy.
Seventy, seventy.
Es bien difícil porque ahorita estamos viendo que hay. Apenas el mes pasado hubo otro accidente donde otro auto cayó en la pared, en la media esquina, donde hay otra casa. Y todos los días me toca que ver muchachos que van a la escuela de Ponder High, a Sage, y se cruzan porque a veces entre muchachos ellos solo quieren ir juntos y no hay un semáforo.
So, a couple of weeks ago, there was also a car that struck one of the brick walls of a residence, see? And it's a very dangerous street considering the fact that there are two schools in that location that the thousands of students walk on every day, including from Sage and from Palmdale High School.
De la carretera, de la Avenida R a la Avenida S, hay diez block. Y sí pusieron un stop cuando ella estaba un poco cerca de la Avenida S, pero no es suficiente. Nadie lo respeta. Necesitamos un semáforo ahí para que se salven más vida. Me queda una niña no más de doce años. Y pienso que un día ella va a manejar y eso no me da paz a mí. Porque pienso que va a tener que cruzar esa carretera también.
So, there are only two stop signs around ten, uh, extending ten blocks on that street, on Twentieth, on S, and near the Palmdale High School, the very, the very ex, um, the very same street where Palmdale High School, um, ends. But to us, it's a very, it's very scary thinking, it's a very scary thought that my only daughter is unfortunately gonna be also a part of those walking that same street where my son got killed.
Gracias a todos.
I'm sorry for your loss. Just so sorry.
Thank you. Muchas gracias. Uh, so I just, um, if I could just, uh, offer one brief remark. Um, this was brought to my attention about a week ago and, um, uh, I wasn't sure if the family was gonna be able to attend tonight. Um, but the request, um, that I would like to formally make of the chair and of, uh, the, the city is that we do a traffic assessment, uh, study to determine whether or not, uh, we can in fact install a stop sign at Twentieth Street East and Avenue R eight, which is where these accidents, uh, fatal accidents have occurred. Uh, and, and in the surrounding corridor. It seems as though there might not be um, adequate stop signs in, in the areas surrounding Palmdale High and Sage Academy. So, that would be my request of the chair. If we either, I don't know if we need to add that to a future agenda or if we can just direct the city manager to investigate further, uh, as to the viability of the installation of a stop sign there.
May I ask a question? Was your son walking or in a vehicle?
He was in a vehicle.
Okay. I'm sorry for your loss.
I'd like to, um, I'm sorry for your loss as well. Um, mi sentido pesame. Es una desgracia que no debería haber ocurrido. Um, stop signs may help, but if someone's going ninety-eight miles an hour, it may not make any difference if there's a stop sign there or not. I'm not saying we shouldn't do the assessment. I think we should. But Captain, uh, can we, um, see whether there's speeding along that way there? That, uh, that maybe the sheriff's department could help us, uh, minimize and mitigate?
Sir, we sent out the formal allegations of street racing until they have had, uh, investigations of the past within a month or more.
If we could do that, I mean, if, if cars are speeding through there at speeds such as ninety-eight miles an hour, this is bound to end in another tragedy very soon. So, perhaps if we could have the sheriff's department really look at that and, and put more, more squad cars. Thank you, sir.
And I believe we have, uh, traffic engineers that also do that kind of assessment, um, in-house. Uh, so working with the sheriff's department, um, taking a look at all of the, that surrounding neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming and it must have, I know that was hard.
Thank you, sir, for interpreting.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, in addition to what she said, you know, it's very heartbreaking knowing that I have a couple of friends, uh, one is here in attendance and the other one couldn't make it, but he was his best friend. And I'm very close to him and it's heartbreaking to see him suffer because he lost his best friend. And you know what sucks? Because I see four, four instances in that same street, a brick wall that is damaged, that obviously it, it's occurred by a vehicle hitting it. So there's, I have pictures, um, of four instances where a brick wall is damaged. Also, there are three crosses that are visible on that street and it's very concerning to me that that many lives are lost on that same street and there's nothing being done about it. And again, there's a lot of kids that walk that street and it's very scary to think that they are going to be the next victim, unfortunately, of that, of a irresponsible driver. I know a lot of people here like to, you know, swerve in and out of traffic and it's, it's dangerous. And it's ten blocks of us just driving straight and no stops. I respect the speed limit on that street, but every time I drive down, down that street, they always wanna go ahead and pass me. And it's unfortunate because people lose their lives like that. And they're not respecting the law. And I hope we could change something about that. We could come together as one here in the city of Palmdale. I know we have disagreements. And I reached out, I, I reached out to a couple of the city members here and I appreciate those that reached back out to me because it's hard. They don't know, they didn't know where to go to, to start this process, but I thank you guys, um, for listening. Once, and I hope something can change, please.
All right.
Thank you.
Iris Rios. Iris Rios? Oh, okay, thank you. Marcos Alvarez.
Hey, Marcos.
Good evening, folks. I'm gonna take a deep breath on what I need to say on what I've witnessed and, uh, in the la, last few months. Um, Eric, Palmdale is coming up. But there's a few hiccups along that coming up. I'm not speaking on behalf of LA Care, Salva, Chirla, Dolores Huerta Foundation. I'm speaking as Marcos Alvarez, the consumer, the taxpayer who lives here in this city. Whether it be Ms. Alarcon, Laura, or anybody else, like the attorney or the city manager. What am I trying to say is, your job is challenging every single time. And I know you, behind the scenes, are doing everything you can to better the city that we live in. We have lawyers and they're professional before they speak. But as I leave my house and I come over here and I witness personal attacks on certain entities from certain districts to the tune of bitch, what do I come home to tell my family? Guess what I witnessed today? So what's the solution? How would, how do we continue to come together and work together? The best example I can tell you is this. I have two daughters. They fight. Sometimes they curse at each other, right? But I look for the positive and I remind them, that's not why I'm raising you. You must respect each other. In fact, I need you to apologize to each other, is what I tell them. We are professionals here. So if we want this body and this community to attend these meetings, what's been happening in the last few meetings are reasons why people don't wanna come here. So, on that note, Eric, yes, the city of Palmdale is moving up. We just need to correct our hiccups. Thank you.
Roger Soderstadt.
Hey, Roger.
Oh, I had to mention when you brought up the sexual predators, there's a silver lining to every cloud. Several years ago, I rented a house to a young woman in the city of Palmdale. And other landlords came up to me and gave me a bad time because they said, "We can't rent Section Eight because you rented to a sexual predator." I don't know exactly how big this exclusion applies to. But yes, get more sexual predators. We can keep Section Eight out of the city completely because it's been a huge detriment. Um, I was personally adversely affected by Section Eight housing. And I'm not the only one. A lot of people in Palmdale have been too. So, if there's any way to keep these people out, let's find it and take it. Thanks a lot.
No more speaker cards on this section?
Okay.
I should change my name to no more speaker forms.
I was gonna say, don't say her name.
I've been to many, many council meetings and I'm wondering why there's no sheriff sitting over there? I have always seen one in the back and here. I'm just wondering. And Councilmember Bettencourt, about the house behind you, did the zoning get changed or is it just four generations living in my house? Across the street from me, I have four generations and the car's a boot and an RV and a boat and collector cars. So it's, uh, wondering now what's going on. They are single-family homes, last time I heard.
No, they, they changed the, uh, into four separate rentals.
Like apartments or something?
Yeah.
Wow, something's going on. The Palmdale Magazine, which we just got out very long ago and I read every single page, um, we don't, six, over sixty-five percent Latino, uh, we don't have a Spanish copy as far as I know. I don't know why we can't produce one and either have it by people letting the city know, you know, send me the Spanish copy, you know, family, friends or whatever, so that they can get, I get a lot of information that I don't know, believe it or not, what's going on. So I think we should look into somehow getting a Spanish copy going, um, for that. I think it's a very beneficial magazine. Uh, the type set in this particular magazine, um, if it gets any smaller, I'll need a Braille copy. I mean, I'm sorry, it is so teeny-tiny and it is so light. It did not used to be. I would rather have smaller pictures, smaller headlines and have the information the size that I can read it, okay? Uh, just real quick on the street, I know the streets sweeping, kind of what you were talking about, whatever, but I pay for two times a month in front of my house to be swept, not once a month.
All right. Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. So now, it takes us to the adjournment. I'm gonna take a minute here because we're gonna adjourn tonight in the honor of Stephen Wood. First, Alicia Shemshak. I'm gonna let you say a few words, but before I start, we've had adjournments in memory of a handful of people recently and it just goes to show you how, how fragile and short life really is and, uh, how we should really cherish every moment we have with each other and our families and, and even in this chamber here. So.
If I could just add to that list, um, Mr. Ronaldo Rios, the son? The nineteen-year-old son who, um, was just spoken about. I know that, that wasn't a recent occurrence, but, uh, since it was brought to our attention tonight, I would respectfully request that we also adjourn, uh, in his name.
Absolutely. So it's, it's happening all too much. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say this about Stephen Wood on behalf of our, um, Housing Commissioner, Chris Fregasans, and this is what she posted. Yesterday, our community lost an amazing human, Stephen Wood, who I was proud to call my friend. He cared so much about our community, city of Palmdale and environment. He was a founding member of the Desert Dumping Task Force and paw ambassador at Yellen Dog Park for many years. I will miss dragging ZZ Top, that was his nickname, around to volunteer around the valley from working graveyard shift at Field of Flags, scoping out new dump sites, illegal dumping cleanups, handing out food banks, toy drives, parking cars at the AV fair for Palmdale High School softball team, airpark cleanups and recovering and delivering stolen vehicles to an outer, vehicle to an elderly man that had no idea his car had been stolen. I will miss our unfiltered conversations about life. Rest in paradise, my friend. With a little heart emoji. Um, I had a chance to get to know him during the community cleanups. I know Eric did as well when we were cleaning up Barrel Springs. Uh, it, it's, it's a true loss to our community. Um, I said, it's a shame that we've been losing so many people in our community, but it just shows us how we gotta cherish every moment here and we really have to cherish and take care of each other. So I'll toss it over to our Mayor Proton. He wanted to say something about Alicia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I think, uh, Councilwoman Bettencourt and myself have already made comments, but, uh, Alicia, uh, worked at the AV Press, but she was also, uh, a very important part of the community. And, uh, she was very soft-spoken. Um, didn't throw her weight around. She was just the person who knew how to communicate her thoughts and did it very well, uh, through the AV Press. In a sense, um, what's happening with the newspaper business is, uh, is difficult. Uh, it's a difficult passing. I know that we're moving forward with, uh, digital news and online and all the different, uh, servers and services, but not actually getting a but not actually getting a, something in print on a daily basis, I think is, is an unfortunate loss for our society. The AV Press at one point had more than 100,000 subscribers. Today, it's, I believe, less than 10,000. And it's not being made up through, through, you know, through online. You can see, you can read the AV Press online, but I don't believe the subscription is very high. It's just passing from the scene. But Alyssa was a very important part of journalism here in the Anlo Valley. And I know that she will be missed by many, including what she did in journalism. She was also very concerned about the city of Palmdale and would involve herself in campaigns and would involve herself in different projects. And I didn't know this much about this aspect of her life, but I believe she was an animal lover.
Oh, yeah.
And.
She loved her dogs.
She loved her dogs. And now she was a proponent for humane treatment of animals. She'll be missed, Mayor. And adding her to the minutes in closing of this meeting will be great and the addition of the young man who lost his life as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So it's adjourned in the memory of all three of them. We're gonna adjourn this meeting to September 18th, 2024, 5:00 PM, right here at the City Council Chamber. I want to thank everyone for coming. Let's remember to take care of each other, take care of yourself, take care of ourselves, and let's get home safe tonight. This meeting's adjourned.